All right, it's November 12th, 7:00 PM. This will be our regular session. We're going to call it Roder. We'll start out with invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Robin, if you'll lead us. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our most gracious and holy Father, we're so thankful for this gathering here tonight. We pray for our mayor and council members as they make decisions for our city and that you will guide them with your wisdom. Father, we ask that you bless our city staff, public work employees, police department, and fire department as they go about the work of our city. We pray for our citizens and ask that you watch over them and all of us as we go about our daily lives. And Father, we pray for our veterans, their families, and thank them for their duty and their sacrifice. Thank you, Father, for your unending blessings and unending love, and we ask all of these things in the name of Jesus.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead. At this time, call for announcements. Does anybody have any announcements? Go ahead.
Anyway, I'm just going to do it from here. My name's Robin Myers. I'm the president of the Waukanoe Voluntary Fire Department on Hillary, and we want to kind of tough the holiday season here in western Waukanoe. So I have some flyers here for the fire department is doing their fourth annual Pancake for Santa. It's on Saturday, December the 6th, from 8:00 to 11:00 at the fire station down here in west Waukanoe. We're going to have pancakes and sausage and drinks, and the Grinch will be there, and Santa Claus will be there. And I've heard this Grinch is the Grinch is the Grinch that everybody hates. And we'll have some crafts and things for the kids. So if you want to come and bring your kiddos and have a really good time, we ask that you come today. And if anybody wants one of these flyers to put out, I have some with me. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Council?
I need to make one.
Okay.
So the agenda that was posted from Monday to September 15th was canceled. That was in case the county wasn't able to get us our campus report. They were able to get it today, so we'll be able to do it by then. December 13th, we have vendors in the park starting at noon lineup for the parade at 5:00 o'clock, I believe. I think our parade starts at 6:00. Anyone who wants to be a vendor, there is no charge, please get with me and get with us to get your slots in the parade also. That'll be followed by pictures with Santa and the tree lighting in the park.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on from there. Number three will be consent agenda items, the A through N, motion to approve those. Any discussion?
I make a motion to approve.
You got a motion?
Yeah, through N.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and second. All in favor?
That's good.
Great.
Chris Burkett.
Chris Burkett.
Yes, sir.
Pass. Okay. I'm understanding we want to move E up from new business, present and review of the proposal for new zoning ordinance, zoning map, and subdivisions.
I make a motion, we move with the agenda item B to now in place of the executive session.
In front of the executive session.
I got a motion. Can I get a second on that? I've got a second.
Chris Burkett.
Chris Burkett.
Yours.
Well, it's amazing to see y'all again. It's actually been a while before I've been in front of council. I've been talking a lot with P and Z the last few weeks slash month. Last time I was with y'all, we were discussing the future land use map, which is over here in case anybody wishes to review it again. I have given the city their final versions of this map now, so y'all have the official final copy here at City Hall with all the legal disclaimers and adoption date information on it. Now for tonight, tonight we're bringing three items to you. We are bringing the subdivision ordinance, the subdivision regulations, the zoning ordinance, and the zoning map. We can kind of start wherever y'all feel like y'all would like to. If y'all have the chance to review any of these items, I would recommend we start there and then we can work our way down the list. All of these items have been reviewed by P and Z very thoroughly, extremely thoroughly. We have gone page by page, made very many edits, talked a lot in detail about decisions and discussions within these pages, and they have made the recommendation to move forward with these items. Tonight, I am not asking for any decision from the council. I just want to discuss and bring this to y'all's forefront. As in the next coming meetings, we will start working towards making a decision on if y'all would like to approve this come December. One thing I will note that was brought to my attention earlier today that I did not have the chance to fix before I was able to get here today is that if you look at the zoning map and the downtown district overlay, it does not currently encompass City Hall. It was slightly taken out, and so that has been proposed to be fixed already to make sure City Hall is encompassed within that downtown district area. Other than that, this map has been approved by P and Z. At that point, I'm going to kind of stop talking because I don't want to talk y'all's ear off. I kind of want to let this be a discussion and let y'all ask me questions and comments in regards to everything that has been put in front of y'all.
Counsel, I know y'all haven't really had a chance to review any of it.
Yeah, I mean, I can. So the subdivision regulations in front of you, that was a recommendation of your city engineer during the comprehensive planning process. What these would do is they would be the regulations that any property owner that was going through a subdivision process would have to follow. So minimum lot size, minimum street requirements, minimum curb and gutter drainage, all infrastructure-related situations, all the way down to your sewer and water lines. Most of this document was provided by public management. We went ahead and gave the first draft of it. That first draft then went to Jacob Martin. Jacob Martin gave their edits and recommendations based on knowing y'all's city system. From that, it went to y'all's public works department, in which y'all's public works department made decisions on some items as well that the engineer left up to the city. And then at that, it was taken to P and Z for their final recommendations. There is one item within this document that council, that P and Z tabled for council decision, and that is in regards to access points to subdivisions. It was made, it was suggested by the chairperson of your P and Z commission that we make it a requirement for a minimum of two access points into every subdivision. However, because of the city's oddly shaped parcels, as I think we're all aware of, them being very long and skinny, P and Z did not want to make the final determination on that, and they wanted to leave that decision to council. So within that document, that's one thing we will need to discuss tonight or what, how y'all would like to move forward with that discussion. Other than that, that's kind of a quick summary of the subdivision regulations and how that would come into play in the city's day-to-day processes. This would not necessarily be a document that council would see very often. It would be mainly handled by your code enforcement officer slash community services development, community services director. However, this is what you would get and what P and Z would be handling whenever they're receiving plots and site plans and things like that to determine if it is within city regulation. Yes, sir.
Is the downtown, the expected?
The plots with the X's.
It's all the X's. And included in this right here will be added, which is where City Hall is.
Yes, all the X's.
All the X's.
Yes. And I'll explain the black overlay when we get a little bit more into that.
Okay, so again, I'm not sure that y'all would have any questions yet for the subdivision regulations. We'll get a chance to look over those if we want to give our chance to go over the zoning ordinance.
I was going to switch to the zoning map if that's okay.
Zoning map, okay.
Yeah. So I wanted to review the zoning map. So I want to review the zoning map next because there's a lot of colors in front of you and a lot of weird boxes in comparison to what y'all saw when we were looking at future land use. So for the most part, your zoning map is very similar to your future land use. We've left ag in a lot of the areas. We discussed ag being on future land use. We've left single family in the areas where single family was on the future land use map. However, you will notice your single family has now been divided into multiple different districts. You have SF 7.5, SF 10, and SF 12. That relates to SF 7,500 square feet, SF 10,000 square feet, and SF 12,000 square feet. This is different from y'all's current zoning designations, which right now, in my opinion, are very outdated and hard to understand. Not everyone will know what our 1, our 2, our 3 will mean, especially when it comes to developers. The naming convention that we've started to use makes that line clear, makes it easier for people to understand when reading and trying to interpret y'all's ordinance. Additionally, your multifamily has divided into multifamily and townhome, and then we have, we have added, we have remained the mixed-use district that was on your future land use map. We have remained the manufactured home district that was on your future land use map, same as recreational and business park. You will see a big black outline down all of Highway 276. This was something that was brought up in discussion with P and Z in regards to how can we make 276 our commercial corridor while still allowing people behind 276 to develop residentially? Because as we already said earlier, a lot of y'all's parcels are very skinny and very narrow. So it might be a, you know, 2,000-foot parcel. However, we only want the first 500 feet to have to be zoned commercial. We don't want all 500 of that to be zoned commercial and allow for that use all the way down into some of these residential areas. So the solution to that that we have decided on was an overlay district of 500 feet. This would only apply to properties that touch the Highway 276 frontage. So that means, take for instance, some of y'all's subdivisions on the northern side of the highway. You'll see that there will be housing parcels within that black outline. That does not mean that they would have to be a commercial property because they do not have highway frontage on 276, but is still within that 500-foot buffer. So if at some point parcels were to be combined or anything like that, the first 500 feet of that parcel would have to then be commercial. The next thing I would like to discuss is, as most of y'all know, that our smallest zoning district that we have established is SF 7.5. As most of y'all know, a lot of y'all's parcels in this city are much smaller than 7,500 square feet. That is completely understandable, and we were aware of that when we were working through this. However, it was also a decision by P and Z that we would not continue to allow parcels to be smaller than 7,500 square feet. So what that means is any parcel that has been plotted before the adoption date of this ordinance, so plotted before January 1 of 2026, would have, would have to be to the SF 7.5. So they would have to have a parcel larger than 7,500 square feet. However, if that parcel has papers on record or on deed or with the county or with the city of something pre the 2026 date, they are grandfathered in, special use permitted in, to allowing a smaller lot size. However, it puts the restriction on any more of those smaller lot sizes being developed in the future. Okay? Hopefully that answers that question because that was a lot of discussion that we had in P and Z.
How does that apply to a commercial piece of property?
In what ways?
So if you have a commercial piece of property and it's smaller than 7,500 square feet, is that allowed?
So at that point, that's when we get into the zoning ordinance itself. There will be a table on a certain page where we'll look at the minimum square footage for each lot size at that point. And I believe that on that table, we do not allow for smaller than 7.5. I think the minimum is bigger than 7.5, if I'm remembering correctly. And I can pull up which page. That looks like your commercial looks like it's one I heard. Yeah. Thank you.
There is something on this map that I want to point out. I want to make sure that nobody can say that this was split in there and you were not aware of it. P and Z went ahead and approved it the way it is. If council chooses to change it, we can do that. There is a parcel between Belavista and Helter Tree. It was brought to us previously with some development they wanted to do, and we denied that development, like 14.10 acres. That is currently on this map, zone 7.5, meaning 7,500 square foot minimal property. We can move that to 10,000 or 12,000, and I want to make sure you guys are aware that currently it is 7.5, and if we need to change it, we can based on what's all decided.
And from a planning perspective, I also wanted to give note on why that decision was made the way it was. If you look at the two pieces of property aligning either side of that, they are both either at the 7.5 zoning requirement now or in realisticness, they are smaller than that. So it does become a slightly harder defendable matter to say that that property has to be larger when all properties on either side of them are within that zoning classification. If we chose to eliminate just a couple parcels and say that those are bigger, I will let Lee take that on her attorney standpoint standing. However, from a planning perspective, that's typically not best practice. It can't be done though.
Talking about these?
She's a very nice skinny piece of property.
But that.
Yes.
How many acres is it?
I'm not sure. They get 14.12, but I could be wrong. It's been a little bit since I was there. But it's one they brought to us earlier this year, and we denied their funds for it. Now, if they were to come back, they're, they're looking at the new subdivision ordinance which is put in place, where they have to have enough on street streets and storm drains and things like that, but they would only be required to have 7,500 square foot lots. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware just because of the discussions previously, and I didn't want anybody to say that we just kind of stuck that in there so that they could do something. I do know they do plan to come back after the first, but I do not know what they're planning on doing here.
I also want to note that in y'all's new zoning ordinance, y'all setbacks and stuff have also been increased. So some of those issues have also been resolved with the zoning ordinance for this SF 7.5. The last thing I want to mention on the map is you, the bottom of this has all the districts. Those are the districts that are on the map currently. However, once we kind of flip over into the zoning ordinance here in a second, there is a lot more districts listed. So those are for future use. If the city were ever to have somebody come and wanted to develop, say industrially, light industrially duplexes, anything of that nature, y'all would have the ordinance and y'all would have the zoning district established for them. They just wouldn't have a spot on the map until they came for that zoning change. Sir, any other questions I can answer in regards to the zoning map?
What's C dash D?
Commercial general.
AMU?
Mixed use.
Gs?
Townhome.
What is it?
Townhome.
Which in this thicker thing you have, it actually lays it out in there.
Yeah.
Greg did have an answer, and I thought it was best that you answer this question so that I didn't muddy it because I'm still wrapping my brain around it. He wants, he was asking because certain things have to happen for the zoning to type of it.
Oh, yes.
And can you explain that?
Yes, of course. Of course. That's actually a good thorough way from map to ordinance. So as we've discussed a lot in the past meetings I've had with y'all, zoning is not an overnight change. In the state of Texas, we are a private property state, and also Texas has a lot of restrictions on the way zoning can be done, as well as on a federal level, zoning has a lot of restrictions for the way it can be handled to make sure it is not a regulatory taking on the private property owner. So because of all that lovely legal mumbo jumbo, this is how it would work for the city. The way a property changes use, so the way it would go from the old zoning ordinance to the new zoning ordinance would be through a process of if the use changes. So thankfully, most of your properties are going to already comply within the new zoning ordinance and/or the few that are going to be SUP'd, specific use permits because of their lot size restrictions. But almost a lot of other things are automatically going to be included. However, if you have a piece of property that is not something that can be easily adjusted to the new zoning ordinance, you are allowed to maintain the zoning that you currently have. They will be set within the zoning that the city currently has. And this is when you think Shannon because she's going to have both ordinances on her desk every single day flipping between the two. So most properties would be in that situation where they are in the new zoning ordinance. The only time in which they would switch to the updated one is if it is an undeveloped piece of land currently, that is currently undeveloped, and that is automatically changed to the new zoning ordinance. Or if it ceases use for over six months, there is proper written text within your zoning ordinance to allocate for y'all being a vacation community. So it's not just, hey, somebody left for the winter, they'll be back this summer. It requires an official cease of use on that property and abandonment clause. Or if somebody's property diminishes by 50% of the estimated, of the appraised value. So somebody cannot come in, tear down 50% of the building, and rebuild it. At that point, it would be considered a change of use as well. Those are the ways in which they would have to redo their properties. That is kind of how you see zoning slowly transition to your newer ordinance. There was also discussions with P and Z of the city going into a six-month allowable period for a zoning change, kind of an incentive for people to go ahead and voluntarily change their zoning from one zoning to another, in which the city would waive zoning fees or price off of zoning fees or some type of discussion of that nature to try to incentivize property owners to come in and switch over to the new and updated ordinance if they see fit. So some of your properties along the highway might want to do this because they might want to switch from their old commercial to the new commercial regulations, so on and so forth. And so that was a discussion at P and Z. That is not a decision that has been made. That is a decision that we can continue to discuss during this process and via separate ordinance and decision factor, and would have to go through legal routes and all that kind of stuff to make sure it's within the city's capabilities. However, is a good option if y'all do want to kind of fast-track some of that process to get people to adopt to that new ordinance. It also creates the situations for properties like Shannon just mentioned that had previously been declined in the past due to zoning regulations, but that now could be approved. It gives them that process to go ahead and voluntarily zone to the new zoning to fast-track their approval of a new development. Of course, that development would still be under y'all's recommendation and y'all's final decision, but it makes sure that they are having to abide by the new subdivision regulations. They're having to abide by the new rules on setbacks, all those kinds of things.
What's the benefit for a commercial property to switch to the new regulation now? You said you know some people may want to do it, right? What's the benefit of doing it?
So for some, it might be, you know, there's now clearer defined definitions. So previously, y'all's old zoning ordinance was a lot more vague in certain areas. So this means that a developer could come in with something that was maybe 75% accurate or even 100% accurate within the text, but there might have been some, well, this isn't necessarily right, or this isn't necessarily right. The new zoning ordinance would be clear and defined in what is expected of that developer. So that means their, their process of getting approved would be easier as long as they are within the specific use, as long as they are doing their proper thing, as long as they have the proper setbacks, all of that lovely information. It will also provide some people the opportunity of, in previous zoning ordinances, they might have had to go through a zoning change to be allowed the use that they would want on that lot versus in this new zoning, that use might already be approved. So they might want to go through this zoning process change post the first to be able to now be able to have that use on that piece of property. There's pros and cons to both the developer and to the city in that aspect. If the city decided to move forward with that decision, of course, the zoning fees would be, the rezone fees would be dropped, but at the same time, it would mean that somebody is going into accordance with y'all's newer, more regulated ordinances.
You've got streetlights highlighted here at the back. Was that a?
That was a situation that we highlighted because y'all are one of our few cities that does not own slash pay for y'all's streetlights. So the way that ordinance has been written in our previous communities is it's for communities that have taken on that role of paying for their electric bill for the streetlights. Most of our other communities do that, they do not. So that, that section had to be rewritten, edited, flipped, changed, and it was one of the things that we wanted to make sure was in alignment with y'all's agreements with the electric company and all that stuff that public management does not have the knowledge to be able to make that clarification on.
Any additional questions?
Okay. Now we get to move to the very big binder, and actually, let's move to the land use tables first before I move to the very big binder clip in front of y'all. So these land use tables went through a very similar process. They started out with city staff and myself going through them. Then they went, you have a question? Okay. And then they went from city staff over to the P and Z. What these tables mean is it's divided into 12 different sections. So the type of use, and then every section is divided into different uses applicable on that chart, and then permitted, which is labeled with the P, and conditional, which is labeled with the C. So permitted would mean if somebody wanted to come in here and they had a piece of property zoned commercial and it, their use had a P beside it, they are allowed to do that. That is allowable by right owning that property. If it had a C beside it, that means that property owner would have to come to you for a conditional use permit. And if it had, if it was blank beside it, that means that the property owner would not be allowed to do that on that piece of property if that was zoned in that way. So you will see that there's 12 tables in front of you, each one of these with their own Ps, Cs, blanks, things like that. I forget if I shared with y'all, okay, this version is highlighted. Sorry, I was waiting for Mary to flip through it. There is certain rows that are highlighted on this table. I am sorry, do not ask me to change those. Those are regulated by the state. Those would be things such as churches, schools, institutional organizations, things like that. If there's anything red, there is not a reason it is red.
Actually.
I have no idea why it's red. That's, okay, yeah, there's no reason why it's red. Yes, sir.
Apparently any flicker.
It's on. I will hold it. I will hold it, and hopefully that fixes the situation. And again, y'all, there's no decisions that have to be made tonight. I just wanted to bring all these documents to y'all, explain them, and let y'all have time to understand what y'all are reading before y'all take this all as reading material for the next couple of weeks.
And any changes that you guys do want to see, please email them to me so that I can get them to her so she can make them before the night, because this will come back before you on the night to discuss again. And then the plan is to have the public hearing and adoption on the 16th, put it into effect on January 1st.
What are these Ps and Cs? Does it say anywhere what they?
On the, in the ordinance, it does. You'll find there will be a page that says, chapter 12, it says, land use tables applicable upon adoption, and that is where those will be inserted once these are done with edits. It's in that book. But I can also let you know the Ps are permitted, so that means if that property owner wants to do that on their property, they are automatically allowed to do so. It is a permitted use. If it is a C, that means it is conditional, so that means they would have to come forth to the council for a conditional use permit. And then if it's blank, that means that is not allowed whatsoever within that district.
What if it's T?
T is temporary. Thank you, sir. So T would be a temporary use, so they would be allowed to have that for a temporary time period, which is outlined within the ordinance itself or within the city's permission. So 60 days, 30 days, seven days, things like that. That'd be things such as like short-term carnivals that come to town, all those types of things that you would allow for temporary use, however, is not allowed to be there
Go through this. Have any more questions on this one?
Amazing. Okay, so now on to the big book, the big, big binder clip of everything and anything. I'm not going to go page by page on this. I think y'all do not want to be here that long, but there's a lot in here. I will kind of go over the highlights. So the first division of this is mainly in regards to your P and Z, your Board of Adjustments, the processes in which they will be held to the standard of the processes in which they will be held to the standard of doing. Um, there are things in there such as how many chair people there are supposed to be, that there is supposed to be a vice chair, all those kinds of details. It discusses the adoption process of certain things, the process in which city, the city would have to go through to get a zoning change, to get a replat, all that type of stuff is listed within that first division. To put it simply, Lee is going to have a fun time reading that chapter because that is all of y'all's legal protection within Division One. Um, moving forward into other parts of the document, you will get into the districts and the land uses established. This is where we will get into all those lovely colors that you see on the map. So single family, multifamily, what exactly is allowed in that area? What is the description and the purpose that those districts allow? What are the lot sizes required? What are the setbacks required? All those types of fun details are required or in those sections of the document. Moving past where those section, where those districts are established, you will get into what we call the additional chap, the additional articles, um, the additional standards, supplementary standards, all those types of things. That's where you'll get into things such as swimming pool regulations or things such as antennas, food trucks, um, parks and recreational facilities, all those types of things, things that don't necessarily apply to a certain district, but apply overall to your zoning classifications as a whole within the city. This went through a lot of edits and adjustments as well, especially each district individually got looked through. Um, the easiest way to look at it is there is a table within the ordinance, I cannot remember the page right now. There is a table within the ordinance that shows each district and what is allowed. It is on, at least this version, it is section fourteen point three, summary of zoning district regulations, page ninety-six. That is the page that if you read anything in this large document, that is the page I recommend you read. That is the one that outlines every single zoning district, what its regulations are from setbacks to lot size to impervious coverage, all those details that are very much necessary. Um, other than that, I'm just going to steal this from you really quick again. No, you're good. Um, I'm trying to make sure there's nothing else that I want to discuss with y'all. Most of this has been discussed with y'all in the past in regards to what these districts are, including the recreational and business park district. We discussed that when we were establishing y'all's future land use map. Um, here again, you will see all those other districts that I discussed that aren't necessarily on your map, but are within the ordinance that y'all could use at future use if y'all ever needed to. And then at the very end, you will see a lot of pages of definitions and items like that. That is to be used for both y'all, P and Z, and any developers. So if they were unsure where they fell, you go to the definition and see if that's what that definition is requiring. Other than that, I'm going to open it up to questions. Um, we can go more detailed next time if y'all would like. However, at this point, I will open it up to y'all because I know y'all haven't had a chance to really review it yet.
Page ninety-eight, can you realign that so that it lines up better with the three descriptions? Permitted, temporary?
Yes, I, yes, sir. Yes, I was unaware of that error. I can get that fixed for you.
Really difficult thing.
No, you're, no, you are one hundred percent correct. On my version on my computer, it doesn't look like that, so we can get that fixed. Yes, this is supposed to be over here and this P is supposed to be down here. We can get that fixed. Thank you for pointing that out, sir. Ninety-eight.
Since it drives the whole table.
Oh, no, you were one, yes, that is an error from exporting from one file type.
It's just a formatting error.
Yes. Word and Adobe don't like to work with each other all the time. It's okay. We'll get it fixed. It's an easy, it's an easy fix.
What color are these properties right here? Got to help Ramsey out too.
Well, Ramsey has the fancy version. That's SF seven point five. Yes, so this is kind of a different through line. What Ramsey has over there is your firsthand look at if y'all decided to let PMI help y'all develop and work with y'all's mapping layers in the future. We have yet to bring y'all a master service agreement. However, my hope is that that master service agreement will be on the same adoption agenda as this in December. Um, hopefully, we'll adopt this and then we'll sign off on a master service agreement and we'll put together a platform like Ramsey has on his, on my iPad over there so y'all can view this and also so developers, residents, all those types of things, Shannon, can view it in a much easier manner than what y'all currently have available to y'all. What was your question, Shannon? Oh, they, oh, Shannon asked a good question. At one point, y'all's page numbers start over, they start over after the... She's supposed to have double checking that they, this is another formatting issue that I'm happy she pointed out. They, they start over after the land use tables. That is another, another lovely, fun word issue. Once we have the final version, we have made all the edits that y'all see fit, that numbering issue will be resolved. They will still restart after appendix A though. Appendix A will start on page one. Yes, sir.
These are all wrong. These are all commercial.
So, so what, so this is where we get into that discussion of this overlay district. So it's, it's a highway corridor over the daylight district. What that means is that anything within this area that has highway frontage would be commercially zoned. However, the P and Z did not want to go ahead and just say, everything that touches the highway, we're going to zone commercial. Because what that ended up doing is on parcels such as this, you had commercial all the way back here. Well, that's a residential property owner who probably doesn't want a commercial property abutting at the back end of his property. So we built in this overlay district where anything that abuts Highway two seventy-six and is within this area has to be commercial, um, as time goes on.
Any more questions?
Ramsey, I am going to steal this from you, so the side of the table can see what I was discussing when it come, came to the mapping, um, platform that we have put together. And this can be shared with y'all, this is public. So I can send this to Shannon tomorrow and she can share this with y'all if y'all would like a different way to look at the map online. So just so y'all are kind of aware of the platform that we will be putting together once all the edits and changes are adopted and decided upon. Any other comments, suggestions, anything y'all would like me to, you know, get y'all a good summary or answer on before I come back on the night? Um, on the ninth, I do plan to go a little bit more in-depth on specific districts, um, make sure that we're all aware of everyone. I'll kind of go more line by line on that table, making sure I get a head nod for every single item. Um, we can also discuss more at that point in time, you know, what this is going to look like post-adoption and all that type of stuff. So a couple of other things that I wanted to note. One other thing that I wanted to note to make sure everyone paid attention to that was decisions that were made upon by your P and Z. Um, first of all, in your subdivision regulations, we have noted in there that everything has to be in alignment with NCT cog. Um, so we're making sure that it is in alignment with NCT cog, but not only that, that it is in alignment with the most recent version of NCT cog. So this meaning that the city will not have to go in and update that every single time the cog comes out with new regulations on design standards and development. Additionally, we've also included the regulation for text dot in there and the ordinance that y'all passed last meeting, meeting before last in regards to concrete streets and curb and gutter. All of that has already been incorporated into the sub, and storm drain. All of that has already been incorporated into the subdivision regulations. And then additionally, another decision that was made on behalf of P and Z was in y'all's zoning ordinance, there was a parkland dedication. This was already something that was in there previously, however, it was a lot more miniscule um, in regards to how it was developed and what was considered a dedication, what was not, how much property the person had to have or subdivide, et cetera. That has now been expanded upon within Article twenty-eight into a lot more regulations and rules on how you have to go ahead about a parkland dedication, what fees you would have to go forth if you decided to go that route, all that type of stuff. Um, I will also mention that within the subdivision regulations, it has been recommended by your city engineer that post the adoption of this document, that the city start looking into design standards and making sure they have those to put in align with the subdivision regulations. And it's also been recommended by your planning council that, or your planning consultant, um, that post the adoption of this, the city make sure to figure out the fee schedules for all the items that are divided within here.
Y'all have recommended fee schedules?
We can put something together, however, we do not currently have a recommended fee schedule. Um, it's kind of how the city chooses to move forward with that option. But that was another item that I wanted to make sure y'all were aware of, of some things that would need to be addressed as things get adopted. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So they were discussing over here possibly a workshop beforehand, if that's what you feel like. Give an email out to Mary, we should, we can try to figure out a time.
That'd be good, you know, this is a lot of information.
A lot of information, so we can just have a workshop to just sit here and go through.
We have a meeting on the night. Adoption would be the sixteenth. So we do have another meeting before then.
The ninth is the regular meeting.
Yes, yes.
We won't have enough time to, you know, discuss and all that.
Yeah, can we just, yeah, we just have a two-hour meeting just to go through the, all of the stuff to come up with after reading it completely? And then that way on the ninth, where we could just talk about those things being changed.
Guys, we're looking at the calendar. You're almost, there's no way you could get notice posted for next week. You're going to be running straight into Thanksgiving the following week. I mean, you could conceivably do it Monday or Tuesday, but, but I doubt that's going to be a super popular idea. So you're almost...
That's why we had it.
Yeah, if you're going to do another meeting, what I'm going to say is you're most likely going to have to do it the first week of December. So if you want to, I would recommend sending to Mary your availability during that first week in your preference so that she can pick the most popular day between all of you and set it.
I can tell you, Caitlin is not available.
We should be able to go through it and if you're there to be able to answer any questions. Okay, so yeah, if we just get an email to Mary, we'll, we can go from there. Good. So we'll move back into...
The third is not available. We have a building in danger of reading. Neither is the fourth, I guess, one, twenty-one.
All right, we'll get back on track. So, uh, number two would have been executive session A. Three one forty, West Highway two seventy-six is authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section five five one oh seven one, consulting with the attorney. And it is seven forty-two. I need a motion to adjourn to. I got a motion. Got a second? All in favor? Correct, four to the left. All right, we're back. Yeah, a motion to get us back into regular session.
Or you can open it back.
Open it back at seven fifty six, doesn't need a motion. Okay. Seven fifty six, we're back into a regular session. Uh, number four will be new business, discussion interaction on canvassing votes, November fourth, twenty twenty five election.
All right. Just got this campus report this afternoon. So for city council place one, City West Walkeney, Tadjikobi had zero absentee voting, thirteen early voting. On election day, you have sixty four, and then for a total of seventy seven votes. Pam Reed had zero absentee voting, eight early voting on election day, sixty two votes, makes a total of seventy votes. For a total of a hundred and forty seven cast votes for place one. City Council Place three, Greg Sprinkle had zero absentee voting, fifteen early votes on election day, fifty eight votes. That brings a total of seventy three. Kevin Helms had zero absentee voting, eight early voting, fifty nine election day voting, and sixty seven total votes. For place five, Chris Burkett has zero absentee voting, nineteen early voting, a hundred and four election day, for a total of a hundred and twenty three. There were four provisionals, all four were accepted.
Any questions? Taking a motion to approve. The canvassing of the votes.
I'm like, I want you to approve of.
I got that one first.
You made it? I second it.
All right, I've got a motion and a second on the table.
Tadjikobi.
Randy Lindy.
Chris Burkett.
Greg Sprinkle.
Dave Shumpert.
Yes. Under new business number five, discussion interaction on appointing a mayor. It's been brought back to the table to sta, to discuss if we want to go ahead and put a mayor in place with the resignation of our previous mayor. Any discussion on this?
Um, and I'll, I'll add that this was based on my recommendation because I, you are required to have a special election if there are two vacancies in the governing body, the mayor is one of those governing body members. And right now, you would be continuing to have one vacancy until the next election in next November. Uh, if you had, if something happened, and I, God forbid if something happened to somebody, or one of you guys wanted to resign, it is an immediate requirement to have a special election, and that is expensive, and that doesn't make sense, uh, for the city. So I, I do strongly suggest that you guys look into appointing, a, and, and I know we couldn't, we couldn't if by the time that last resignation happened, we did not have time or the ability to get the mayor position put on this last November election, otherwise we would have, um, but. I wouldn't even get it on the May election. That's one, yes, thank you. Um, so I, I'm strongly recommending, we do not want to keep, we do not want a vacancy for a year, so.
So I think I understand the timing, uh, the, the lifespan of the appointments, but can you go through that for us, educate us a little bit if we, if we appoint mayor? That, that's.
It's just to complete this term, for the next, right.
Which would be until the next November.
Correct.
And that, then that would vacate place five.
If you were to, if you were to appoint Chris, you would, yes.
And, and if we did that, that appointment too would, would be until the next election.
Would that be until the election day, but two full years?
Correct, it is the entire term. Now, you could conceivably, now, that's not, if you were to uh, appoint Chris to the mayor position, that would create the vacancy, provided he accepted it. That would create that vacancy. You would, we would on the next agenda bring forward a, an appointment for place five, because we wouldn't, we didn't necessarily know that's exactly what we were going to do. So, um, we would then bring, bring either an appointment, or we could, you could conceivably say we're appointing for a period of a year or have, uh, an extra election. So that's not hard to do, if we wanted to do, put an extra spot on the ballot, kind of like what we did when you ran for that first position, when, when we had, like, took up that one year spot, and then just had, had an extra election. We could conceivably do that, but that's not in front of us today. Today, the only thing would be whether or not you guys wanted to do.
Yeah, you have to understand the mechanics.
Yeah, so we can do it either way, basically.
But one at a time.
But if I, but if I understand you correctly, what you're saying is we're going to, we're going to fill a vacancy and create a vacancy at the same time.
Right, what, with the vote, well, I don't know, because we don't know how you're going to.
Right, 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 but let's, so, um.
But if you were to do that, yes, and then we would immediately want to fill the other vacancy, no vacancy. Okay, that's going to be my motto for the council with every, we don't want to leave a vacancy.
I'm, I'm just, go ahead.
Do you understand, so we were to appoint, uh, appoint somebody for place five, is that for two years, or can it be for one year?
Except for us.
That's not, that's not before us today, but yes, conceivably, yes, you could say we're going to appoint somebody for a period of a year with the, that the next November election, elect a one year, a temporary one year term. You can also just appoint them to fulfill the entirety of the next term, that's not a big deal either. Okay. So, but, but today, the only thing is the mayor.
I think, I would like the recommendation that we keep, Chris, that's the man.
Recommendation or a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second that.
I got a motion on the table with a second to appoint Chris Burkett as mayor to finish the term.
Tadjikobi.
Randy Lindy.
Randy Lindy.
Dave Shumpert.
You got a four M with one of staying?
You accept that?
I accept.
Okay.
All right, so with making that decision to move over the mayor's seat, we need to look at, see this poss possibility of discussion and our action on appointing a mayor pro temp. That way, again, we keep, make sure the government keeps moving.
I'm going to say about this too, because Mary and I kind of talked about this, you guys, because you now have a, you got a mayor, now you have a new vacancy. Um, you guys can do that today, y'all can at the time point, be all ready to appoint a place five. We can do the mayor pro temp after that as well.
So we can do it now, or we can table it?
We can table it.
Is that a motion?
Make a motion to table it to next week.
I'll second that.
I got a motion and a second.
Tadjikobi.
Randy Lindy.
Chris Burkett.
Dave Shumpert.
Okay, moving on, D, discussion and our action to approve budget amendment to move seventeen thousand five hundred dollars from contract labor twenty oh seven five oh five eight to salary twenty oh six fifty oh two. Mary?
So, um, we have a, we have no longer need the seventeen thousand five hundred in contract labor because one of our public work employees got his sewer license, so we have a fully licensed sewer contractor, not contractor sewer operator. So we're looking to moving that seventeen five into the water salary to bring that up.
All right, who's, who's our DJ?
DJ.
DJ?
I think it's really important that we recognize the people who've been in the city to get, uh, certifications and get accreditation. And that we, that we reward them for getting that extra work done and getting that, uh, getting those licenses to save us money.
That's who would be, say, uh, C.
C. Yeah, we don't, we don't need a B.
But he's always got a C.
Oh, me. And he's got a sewer, see, I got a water. Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion if we move the seventeen thousand to the, back to the, seventy five back to the city.
I got a motion.
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Tadjikobi.
Randy Lindy.
Greg Sprinkle.
Dave Shumpert.
Passes. All right, moving on, we've already done E, so we'll skip over to F. Discussion and our action to approve the West to Walkeney Economic Development Corporation Comprehensive Plan for twenty twenty five to twenty forty five, Donna Milburn.
And Mr. Mayor, I have three items here on the agenda that I'll be talking to council about today, S, G, and H. And I have it on pretty good authority that there's a whole group of people behind me that would just love all of you guys if you would consider switching and letting us do item G for the approval, the talking about purchasing a portion of the land for the Keep West Walkeney Beautiful sign first, and above item F.
So some people want to go home, is what you're telling me.
So we've been asked, even though I've called it, can we go ahead and with a motion?
Somebody can make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion, we move G in front of F.
I've got a motion to move G in front of F.
Tadjikobi, or, I'll second that.
Got a second, we had, all in favor?
Tadjikobi.
Greg Sprinkle.
Dave Shumpert.
You got what you need? Okay.
She's frightened, but I said, I got it. Is there anything in here that?
So we'll go ahead and move on with G, discussion and our action to approve. West, no, I'm skipping that one, sorry, we're doing, we're doing, what are we doing here?
You're taking G out of order.
Yeah, we're doing G. Discussion and our action to approve West Walkeney EDC purchased a small portion of land approximately nine by ten feet necessary from grave, Greater Vision Church for thirty six hundred dollars to be able to install the already made Keep West Walkeney signing on the frontage road outside of the text dot right away, that's Donna Milburn, so.
Okay, so, I'm so glad we have all these Keep West Walkeney Beautiful people here. As everybody knows, the, they came and city council and the committee came up with a wonderful idea to have these signs made, to go at the entrance of each side of the city. And the, what, EDC, prior to my being involved in the board, had voted and approved and gave ten thousand dollars. And the, what EDC, prior to my being involved in the board, had voted and approved and gave ten thousand dollars for these signs to be made. But one of the signs is made and then there became a hiccup about being able to get permission to get these signs put up. And that hiccup has not been resolved with SRA or with text dot. So they went to and worked very hard and they went to the church that is very close to the entrance on the east side of our city and the church offered a section of land. They're excited apparently to have that sign put up because it's a beautiful sign. It has the EDC's name on it, so we have some ownership to it, so to speak. It's certainly part of our marketing advertising for us that we have paid for this and our name is on it. And the church had suggested that we rent, that they rent it every year for three hundred dollars a year. The problem with that is that puts the church in a situation where they cannot be held up, not liable should there be an accident or a problem with that sign. So if my understanding was correct, what that means is that if the sign was put up, regardless of what a lease agreement said, if there was an accident, that sign fell down, someone got drunk, ran off the road, hit into it and there was a lawsuit. No matter what that lease agreement was, they wouldn't hold the church harmless from any kind of lawsuit that occurred. And the city would have difficulty, or it might even be impossible, to get insurance coverage from the city on a, on a leased rented property for this sign. And that kind of made sense to me when it was brought to me because I thought, okay, if I own a home and I rent it out, no matter what my rental agreement is, I can put in there that whatever happens at that rented property is going to be the responsibility of the person renting it if there's a lawsuit. But we all know if somebody came over and fell off their roof and broke their back, they're going to sue the person who's renting it. They're going to sue me because I own the property, which would be the representation of the church. And they're going to sue everybody that touches it that they can possibly sue. So the attorney, our wonderful attorney Lee, came up with this idea that it could be purchased maybe by the city. And then we talked and I thought, well, maybe by the EDC. We have the ability, our budget that y'all have approved allows us to purchase, this is a part of like infrastructure. That budget was approved, it has been published publicly in a newspaper, so we have the opportunity to do that. So I went and I talked with Mary and Dwayne about this, they brought it before their board and they went to the church. And Mary, would you like to share with council what the church said?
Yes, I've been talking, Dwayne and I both with Pastor Miller, Matt Miller from Greater Vision Church. And the church is excited to have the sign on their property, whether it be a leased part of their property or to purchase. And they're definitely in agreement to let the EDC purchase that little corner. It's not a very big plot, it's just big enough for the sign and we're going to put a few flowers out in front of the sign, that would be it. Um, so they're very much in agreement to let the EDC purchase it for the thirty six hundred dollars. And, uh, it's a win-win for us, for EDC, for the city, uh, and for the church. Because if anything happened and the city wanted to move the sign somewhere else, they could always move the sign and the property would then revert back to the church, is what I understand. So I think it's just a win-win for everybody.
So it's not a full purchase?
Pardon me?
It's, it's a purchase and even if you.
It's a purchase of the little plot.
Sign, it's still your property, it's city's property, right?
No, that's what we, the design of this is going to be, that it would be a reversion, that if the city stopped using it for the purposes of the sign, that, that really all we would be doing with this small little plot is keeping a sign there. And we'll write that in a way, which is if we cease to use it for a period of, you know, six months to a year, we'll kind of decide what we want to do. Then it would revert automatically back to the then owners of that property.
Would you get replatted?
It'll get a survey.
Are we still doing Tucson?
Do we get the money, but I'm sorry?
Still doing Tucson?
No, because we've been using it, what we're anticipating is, I, I think we kind of came up with that number based on what would be like a ten year estimate of what they talked about doing like a three hundred dollar a year rental rate. And so that was kind of what we were looking at, I guess.
That song was made for a long time now.
Yes.
Why don't you keep it, how do you like the plan and returning it?
The church is giving us a favor. I mean, I think it's really to respect the fact that the church is giving us this favor.
I'm, I'm making a motion, we approve the money for the property, put the sign on it.
But I would say keep it, you know, if you're buying it, even if you're not using it, keep it.
You're only talking about, uh, six foot by.
And to be clear, it is so that the, the EDC is going to be the purchaser here, so that's going to be, we're approving the budget amendment on this. The EDC is going to take a look at that.
Yeah, well, we don't have to do a budget amendment because in infrastructure, we're allowed to, we're allowed to purchase property. So we don't have to do a budget amendment and we don't have to put anything else in the newspaper after this. We don't have to hold a public hearing for this, we already have it in our budget to do. And the sign, because we paid ten thousand dollars for it, five thousand for this one, five thousand for the other one, and our name's on it. We kind of have, we've, we've got a vested interest in this as well to go ahead and get this up. And again, we are just talking about a very small area like this. So if at some point something happened and that sign wasn't there, there isn't anything that ought to be here that you would sell the property for or use it or using it. But it, it should.
And we would also make it where it would be if we wanted to change the sign, so we would have to no longer use that space for the purposes of the sign in order for it to revert back. But that's really all it would be large enough to do.
So I'm a hundred percent for it, I just have two quick questions. One is, if, if it has to be replatted, who pays for the survey?
The EDC.
Or is that part of the thirty six hundred or is that in addition to thirty six hundred?
No, if you approve it tonight, then it'll be on my agenda to go back to the EDC on the December first meeting for the EDC and we'll have all the numbers and everything then from late in the contract for the EDC to approve for us to go ahead and move forward with that.
And then are the property taxes due on it?
No, the church doesn't own any property taxes and the city doesn't either.
I mean, I'm just looking at future costs, right? Because thirty six hundred is what you're asking us to approve, which is perfectly fine, but then there's also going to be a survey.
Yeah, and actually, I'm asking for the council to approve the dollar amount. I'm asking you to approve the purchase.
Gotcha.
Because the dollar amount is already in our budget, we've already approved our budget. So we, we're able, we're a corporation, we're different than the other two committees that we have, TMZ and keep west walking.
I'm just, I'm just asking the question on the, on the additional cost.
Hey, so I've already got a motion to approve the allowing EDC to purchase land, I've got a second. So I've got a first and a second, if there's no other discussion, full motion. There you go.
Thank you so much. Oh, that's what you got.
Mary and whole customer, uh, I'm grateful, we'll be happy to get that off of his property and on for this year.
It looks good.
What's on the other side? Do we have anything for the other side? Not yet, they're working on properties.
Not yet, so.
Okay, so now we'll get back in order, we're going to go back with F, discussion and our action to approve the West to walk any economic development corporation comprehensive plan for twenty twenty five to twenty forty five, Donna Milburn.
Yeah, am I able to click it from over, come here again, it's just.
Alright. So I want to thank you guys for allowing us to come and get, show you that we have accomplished what you asked for us to accomplish. Back in March, when I became the president of the EDC, we took the plan that had been approved in twenty twenty three and we saw some significant errors in it. The EDC revoked that plan and I came before you as council, I showed you the problems with it and the council revoked that plan. At that time, one of the things that I was asked to do was to write a plan, following through with the promise I made that whatever we did would be consistent with the twenty year plan Jacob and Martin had created for the city that they were in the process of adopting. So that is what this is, this is a replacement, this is the EDC's plan to be consistent with the plans that you guys have passed. One of the things about the prior plan is that it seemed to be competing with doing charts and graphs of population and that kind of stuff with what you saw from Jacob and Martin. And that's not really what we need for the EDC plan to have. So you had this sent to you in digital form, these are your paper copies to continue to have. The blue copy stays up here with the mayor, there's one with the city and then there's one that stays with the EDC. I just didn't waste the money to turn around and put those in blue for, blue folder forms for you guys, okay? So we've updated. Alright, so what do you want me to do, point to you? Okay, so we updated the picture, as you guys know, from when we brought in the updated version of the brochure to be able to send out to advertise for the city. And we have our new logo and our signs and banners that are going out representing the EDC. And then your table of contents explains that most of this is actually just letting you know and the city council know, city staff know, anyone in the public know, this is what an EDC is. This is when it was established, this is how it was put together, the voters established it in two thousand seven. It was established correctly the first time it was set up. These are the laws that relate to how to, an EDC function and you can go, you can look at this. Anyone from the public can come in and ask to look at this and they can look up these laws for themselves to see what we find, what we don't find and how EDCs make it work for cities. I have worked with each of you individually at various levels on different projects. And so I want to assure you that when you ask me, explain to me again what an EDC does, that's a good question to ask. I was on city council for four and a half years and I can tell you in that four and a half years, never did the EDC president come to make a presentation to the city council. Never was there a communication about what that was until in reverse, we were dealing with some issues about needing some money for the Rabbit Cove Road project. And that's when we went and started looking at what they were doing and stepping in. Now y'all have done a great job with Mary on the board, you're working hand in hand with the city for all the things that we do. And I'll get questions at times, even from city staff, like will all the members have to be living, residing inside the city limits? No, our original incorporation papers and the voting, what the voters pass, we have seven directors, three must live inside city limits, four can live outside but near. And so what this does, this is just goes through and lays out for everyone exactly what an EDC is. So that one day when I'm not here, we're not reinventing the wheel. James will tell you, that's my favorite phrase when I talk about this city, we keep trying to reinvent the wheel. We're no longer reinventing the wheel. Mary, we'll have this in digital form, it'll be up here as it's a living, breathing document. As we make changes, you know, Casey's here from my board, as we make changes to this over time, we'll vote, we'll bring this before you. You'll be able to make changes and put this in here. But this allows everyone immediately to say, well, let's go look and see what they do and what the requirements are. You already know how the application process works, these are the requirements to be a member of the EDC. In twenty twenty four, there were several months where there was discussions and disagreements in the board about what each role of the president, the vice president, the secretary were. That was unnecessary. We went back and we fixed some of those incorporation papers by readopting what was in the original papers. All of the officers' roles are in the incorporation papers. What we do, what those roles are, are there and anyone can come in to this city hall, look at the articles of corpor, of incorporation and read what those roles are for the officers. These are your current, current board of directors. The mission statement and the vision statement has not changed. Next. We work hand in hand with the city council and we are doing that now and it's why I keep coming to talk to you and I keep bringing things to you both as a council and when I talk with you individually about certain things. And when you say things to me, I hear you and I try and implement them. So for example, when Councilman Jacoby and his wife mentioned about not getting the sales tax dollars because people were automatically having their purchases going to the twin land, that's when we started to bring back our budget program. Those are the kind of things that happen when you're working directly with city council. The infrastructure development that's going on in the city, the EDC has always been involved in that, that's something that EDCs do. So you have the example in here for the next readers, the next council members that come on about the loan program and what we did for the Rabbit Cove Road back years ago and what we're currently doing with the propel investments and the hotel development and all that that's going on across the street in front of the golf course. Next. Our grant program, again, when you pass a budget, we have a grant budget. The grant program was brought back into place that had not been used since twenty twenty. We have a facade grant that is allowed and again, I'm going to digress here just a little bit. Here's what is the most important thing about having people appointed on an EDC board who have run their own business. You can have as much education as you want, you can be as smart as you want and you can work for as many people as you want. But if you've never run your own business, then there are just things that you don't know just because you haven't had experience with it about economic development. So the facade grant that was originally written up by the former attorney, Jim McElroy, is a, it's a wonderful document. We have updated it and one of the things that we updated it with is we have expanded it so that our grants are not just twenty five hundred dollars. Because I'm so blessed that you guys appointed Casey Loughlin onto the board who runs two of his own businesses. And he was the one who brought to our board and he said, hey, guys, twenty five hundred dollars, that's not really very much in today's time. Maybe in twenty twenty they paid for a lot, but that doesn't pay for very much now. So if you have a business who's doing something pretty massive and they're spending a lot of money, why don't we consider scaling it so they can be given more money in this grant program? And so that's what we've done. So you can see where your total project cost, you can, there's a percentage that you can get from that. So you can get anywhere from twenty five hundred to ten thousand dollars. The grant documents that we use in that contract are so specific, we're able to determine any amount of range in those. And it's so beautifully written up, you know, you lawyers, y'all do such great work when you do these things. We have an exact list of what we're looking at and how we evaluate when somebody comes in and they ask to get a grant. And right now, we don't have any competing businesses asking for grants, but as we develop more and our economy grows, my hope is we're going to have competing businesses and once we do, we already have approved a structure where we're going to place value on the certain enhancements and the things that they're doing. And that'll allow us to weigh which businesses get the grants and which businesses do not get the grant. My board approved at the last meeting adding parking lot grants. Parking lot grants are something that most cities do. We've got Emery's EDC parking lot grant program, we looked at their documents and what we did was we created our parking lot grant documents to match exactly the facade grant documents, other than the changing of the name and everything else. Now, we don't have much money in our budget to do more than five thousand dollars on this next budget year. But when we get to next year and we start looking at that budget, we're going to be able to then have a better idea of how many businesses are asking us to help improve those parking lots. And one of the nice things about all of these grants and the way those documents are, are written up, anyone coming to us for a grant has to have done all the things they were supposed to do for the city. They have to have contacted Shannon, they have to have gotten all their certificates of occupancy or anything that they need. They have to comply with all planning and zoning, they have to comply with all ordinances. So it's very specific and they have to show us that they've done that. And if they have it, they're not even eligible for any money from us. Because the EDC does not build somebody's front or build them their business. So these legal documents are just beautifully written. And then we always have had the financial loans and grants, the businesses have been able to come to us and get some help on, on a case by case basis. So before you, this is not in the plan, but I wanted to make sure that all of you were aware and so I've given it to you today, the things that I promised you we would do and what we have been working hard at doing to repair, fix some of the things that were going on with the EDC. So these are some of our repairs. It was reincorporated twenty twenty three unnecessarily with some inaccurate information. We already corrected that in our March meeting when I met with y'all and we passed and we made those corrections. Operations required by law were, that were. Operations required by law that were not being followed are now being followed. So there's two different financial documents that have to be sent in to the state comptroller every year. The EDC had only been sending one. The EDC's operation had actually received a letter from the Texas comptroller that stopped operations. So when I came on board, there was a legal stoppage of what we were doing. Having Mary on the board, we got the documents taken care of. We got everything into the Texas comptroller's office and we got our, yes, you're reopened now and you're functioning well for business. Everything that we do is supposed to have a performance contract. You have to have a performance agreement signed by a business. It must by law have a clawback clause. That means that if I hand a business money to do something, in that legal document, it must say, if you don't use that money the way that we have given you the money to use it, you have to pay us back. We don't, we didn't have any of those. I didn't see those anywhere in any of the documents that I went through. And they weren't in any of the minutes or the agenda. We are now, we've developed all of those. We're utilizing those. We have vendor forms. We keep receipts. We do invoices. So we keep all of our financial documentation, one copy with the city, one copy with the EDC. We have some problems with the bank account information. There's some inaccuracies. We've gotten a lot of that cleaned up. When I got on the board, we had Jim Turnipseed still as a signer on all the accounts. We had Linda Katner as a signer on all the accounts. And we had Pam Reed where she had just resigned. So not, not really time for her to be able to go off those accounts. But we've changed those. We have a slight issue with tax numbers, tax ID numbers. And again, because when you reincorporate, it changes tax ID numbers. So we are now, Mary and I are now working with the bank to get all those under the correct numbers. Our required audits are underway. The 2021, 2022 audit is completed for the EDC portion. The city is still getting theirs done because y'all are longer, but ours is completed. And Mary has been told by the auditor that we're in good shape for the EDC. The five-year plan with the inaccuracies has been revoked. And today, I'm hoping you guys will approve the plan that we approved at our last meeting so we can go ahead and move forward. We've re-implemented and approved the facade grant since 2022. And you see the new grant programs we're developing. What the park grant is going to be a different thing. I talked to you about here in just a little bit. We've cut costs dramatically in what we've been doing. So one of the things, there were three different websites, three different social media sites that were out there to be used. The GoDaddy site was running about $900 a year and it was being debited out of the, with a debit card out of the bank account. That particular website had inaccuracies on it. And one of the most prominent thing was the person who was managing it was just cutting the YouTube videos of city council and EDC meetings. So you could pull it up and you could push on those Youtubes and watch you guys. Okay, we don't need to do that. We already paid the city over $700 a year for our portion of the EDC side on the city website. So my board canceled that. We stopped the debit card. We canceled the debit card in fact, because there were certain purchases we couldn't quite figure out. Looking at it, we're coming off of that. We've gone back to this very nice old system, two signatures on each check. And then again, other things similar to how, I know this would be really nice if you guys had one of these with what I just handed you, but you don't need it. I know the city council goes home and you've got a stack of documents you put over. Y'all don't need me to spend, you know, another $80 to give you nice blue notebooks to put these in. So we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can with the money that we are responsible for. And one of the biggest things with all of our board members, every seat is filled. And I'm pleased with every member on my board. So next. We are, we changed a program and rather than having businesses come in and fill out paperwork and then the EDC meets and decides whether they qualify to be business of the month, our board scrapped that. Every business in the city of West Tewocanee is adored. We support every business here that's functioning. So our business of the month starts from A, goes to Z. And every month I meet with those businesses. This city passed a law in 2014 that any business that is posted on social media anywhere must sign a piece of paper that says they agree for their information to be posted. That's the law you guys passed. So one of the nice things about that, which makes me actually meet with every business owner, is I have to take them that piece of paper. They have to sign it. I tell them they're going to be business of the month. Jim Turnipseed has allowed me to have the EDC Facebook page. So they get pictured on the Facebook page. And then Mary posts them on the city's page. And we changed who was responsible for that. Your city secretary is the person who is responsible for what's on social media, responsible for what's posted. So that way you don't have various members later on from the EDC posting stuff. So she is responsible. I'm an authorized second poster. And we meet at least twice a month, sometimes twice a week. And so it's never going to be outside of the control of the city council again. Okay? We also, for the first time, has developed a marketing brochure for the city, which you guys have all seen this before. So go ahead and flip, because this has been sent out to you. I also, again, I'm not giving you these because we don't need to spend the money to give you things that y'all don't need to go take home on the table. But we have put together a business folder for every business that comes in here. And inside of it are simply welcome pages and pages from this plan that you guys are hopefully going to approve tonight. And then I have a meeting with some different people coming in from New York. And I realized we need to upgrade this just a little bit. So it's the same thing, but it's in upgraded form. Okay, we only have seven of these. These are for larger businesses coming in from out of town. You guys can look at that and pass it on. It's a little bit more professional in this presentation. But this way, every business knows exactly what's going on and what they have available for in, in terms of the EDC. What's not on my screen, but is in your packet, is the list of all the brochure placement locations. I've gotten into about half of them. Because these brochures are going all over the state. They're going to the visitor centers at the entrance from each of the major states, Louisiana, Arkansas, Oklahoma. But it's a lot of work. And so gotta give me time to get those where all the places they need to go. We are now back supporting community events. That some, it was supporting community events, but for some reason last year, the cotton patch wasn't supported. Things like that are very, very important for us to do. And so we are back supporting the cotton patch. And we actually have in our budget, we budgeted for that next year. We are supporting the program at the library and we have budgeted it for that next year. That's what brings in our job and our job maintenance. And we have all new marketing material. Over here, no, go back one. Yeah, over here, the yearly calendar. A lot of people ask me, well, what do you do all year? When are the events? What are the things that you do? The EDC does way too many things to put on a calendar. But we do have some standard things that we know are coming up. And this calendar is exactly what we know we're going to be supporting and we're going to be doing. And one of the things that I see the most complaints on online is interesting because apparently people don't understand. They do a lot of complaining about the two meals that the EDC sponsors. We sponsor one Chamber of Commerce meal and we sponsor one firefighter meal. The reason those are so important is because both of those luncheons are going to go on, whether we sponsor them or not. But if we don't sponsor them, the business that receives the money for that meal is going to be from Quimac or it's going to be from Lawena. It's not going to be a West Tewocanee restaurant. So we sponsor those two meals so that we can make sure that one of our restaurants is able to provide that meal. And we do it because it allows for the marketing and the pointiness of businesses and to help with the economy here. Each one of these events, whether it's sponsoring a catfish tournament, each one of these events still goes before the board. We still approve it. And sometimes we will make adjustments about what we want to have happen at the event. But that's our basic calendar. Tourism is one of the most important things for this city. It's one of the things that EDCs are able to help bring about and help make happen. And so we want to make sure and have that in the plan, make sure everybody understands that is a single important thing to us because it helps our economy. And then last, these are actually the goals that we have, what we do. The reason it says 20 years is because we're just matching the 20 years of the plan you guys just approved from Jacob Martin. Okay, again, these are all changeable and flexible. They're not set in stone. I'm not going to read all of these to you. I think that they're pretty self-explanatory as you read through them. The most important, I think, is the number one goal is that, is that we are working in all ways possible to assist the city of West Tewocanee in implementing the comprehensive plan developed by Jacob and Martin and adopted by city council in 2025. The ongoing growth in this city emphasizes the importance of strategic planning and infrastructure development to support the expanding population and needs of the community. And the West Tewocanee EDC will be an active participant in this group. So I would gladly appreciate, I'll take any questions. And I am, I would gladly appreciate if we could pass this so that we can move on and keep doing what we're doing.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your hard work and leadership. How do you send all these brochures to different states and everything?
I get in my car and I drive. I'm getting to meet Chamber of Commerce personnel in all different cities, EDC personnel in all different cities. I got to meet JD's sister-in-law at Emery's EDC. And we got to talking. That's how we got the parking lot grant information. So it's, when I'm doing that, it's marketing as well and markets for our city. And it lets them know that we're growing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for? If there's no other questions, entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve the EDC plan for the next four years. You got a motion on the table?
A second.
You got a second?
Judge.
Motion passed. Four. Okay, we'll move on from there. To H, discussion interaction on West Tewocanee EDC creating a park grant program and repairs to two pavilions in the park down the middle.
All right, guys. So I'm going to hand you a sheet that says the things you already know. You need to read on your own about the problems that we have in parks and the concerns that we have that keep being brought up to city council and the EDC and in the public. And then a copy of a potential park grant program that we, if tonight y'all say, yeah, let's see about you doing something like that, we can do it. Our EDC has not passed this grant program. We wanted to bring it to you guys first. In the past, when the EDC has given some money to the park, for example, the $1,800 that was improved, I think in 2024 to go for helping with the doors on the park restroom. You know, procedure's a little bit different from what we're doing now, but that got approved and a check, you know, it was on the, in the budget. It was approved by city council. So that check went through the city to help offset some of the costs for the new door replacement. Those doors lasted a month, six weeks, and now they're damaged again. And so as, we want to help because that park, different than other city parks, that park is based, a basis for tourism, which is what EDCs promote and help do. So if you go to a city, you know, that's landlocked, say like Greenville, and they will go to their EDC and they want to get money to help with a park up next to the school, the answer is no. The EDCs don't do that. But if they want to get help with the park, their big sports park that they're doing that brings in business, brings in tourists, where they're having their baseball, their soccer, all of their stuff, EDC does help them with that. So here, if you want to put a park, you know, down on the south side of the city somewhere that it's not going to be advertised, it's just for the little community, that wouldn't be something that you come before the EDC for. But if you want to have something done in this park and you would like the EDC to help, we decided that we need to have some kind of program in place where you actually come to us and ask for that help. And so in that respect, we would need to have a park grant program, just like a facade grant program or a parking lot program, where you guys would decide, hey, let's see if the EDC would maybe help us do X, like fix the pavilions in the park that we have. Then city, city council would decide to do that. You would have probably the city secretary or someone, or the mayor, fill out the request for the money. And then you would submit that to the EDC. And then we would go back and we would look at that and see if it meets all the requirements that we need to have and to be able to offer that money. It solves a couple of problems if we do it that way. First, it solves the problem of there being, I want to say constantly, but it seems like you guys are constantly having struggles with how much money do we need? What can we get help with? You've got a playground equipment that's in really bad shape. It's actually dangerous for kids to be on it. The big halls, it's huge. You've got your public works departments that are trying to maintain and take care of it. There's a lot that goes into this. And I've been here for many, many years. And I got to tell you, I have watched this, the city councils throughout the years. It makes me, it's heartbreaking because everyone has tried so hard. They'll do a park board and they'll try and make it work. Well, that's not really working. So then they suspend the park board. So then there's friends at the park. And these people putting money, they pay out all their effort. Well, they need a little bit more. So then go back and try and do a park board again. This is hard maintaining this park. And on the EDC, we want to help. So this may be a way for us to be able to do it. And then if you guys establish a park board and nobody's applying to be on it and you go, well, what do we do? Because nobody's applying to do this. Some of my board members mentioned, well, maybe one of the reasons no one's applying is because they don't see how they can make it happen to make it better. People don't just want to be on a park board if all they're going to do is complain about what's not going on in the park or bring lists to you about what's bad in the park. They want to know they're going to be able to actually make a difference. And there's no money that goes to the park board. It's the city council who makes those decisions. So that's where the idea of doing a park grant program opens up maybe a door now too, where the public can say, you know what? Now we see there's a procedure where maybe there is money available to us, not just us asking city council, but city council can go to the EDC. Maybe it'll give them some hope that this might be a way to kind of turn the tide a little bit and keep the park going forward. And, and I'll tell you again, I seem real hesitant because we're going step by step with this one as carefully as we can. So my board has recognized that we've got two pavilions in the park that have shingle roofs. Both of those pavilions are in pretty bad shape. They're starting to deteriorate. Those pavilions are rented out for parties. They're used for all the events that happen in the park. If we don't do something to repair those roofs, the deterioration will get to a point that then you're going to have to replace the pavilion. And that's extremely costly. That's much more costly than just repairing the roof. So my board said, approve me. We'll go ahead and go get some estimates for these two. And we did. We got one estimate bid that comes to $11,000. I re-added, I had the wrong number on one of them. And I recontacted the contractor. $11,000. And then we have another bid that's $8,600 that would change those roofs to metal roofs that match the other pavilions with metal roofs. But we can't just go do this in the park. Okay, because it's not our park. It's the city's park. So that's why, again, we had cart before the horse just a little bit as we're trying to resolve this. That's why I'm coming to you today and ask That's why I'm coming to you today and asking if you would approve having a park grant program like this. And if so, I don't think today would be a day, and leave your, whether it knowing this or not, I don't think today would be a day that we vote on replacing roofs or on these bids, but instead just approving the park grant program in and of itself. And then maybe next city council, y'all can look at these. And then if you want to apply to have these pavilions done, then we kind of do it that way.
Yeah, probably the bid.
Yeah. I, I can, let me, let me send them to you. I'll send them to you by email.
So who, so the park grant grant program, so who applies? City applies, right?
The city applies.
I think we put money into the, into this.
So, yeah, so, so, um, not opposed to our grant program at all, but we do, you know, we did find money from the occupancy tax that we collected on the Airbnb's and the VRBOs that we have money in the budget now. Whereas in 2024, there was $5,000 in the budget for the park. Well, $5,000 isn't going to do anything. Well, so we're in the $60,000 to $70,000 range now. But what, maybe as a suggestion, rather than a, a grant program, is there a way that we could do matching funds, a matching funds grant where we were, we, we contributed some of that money from our park budget that we did put in this year and was matched by the EDC? And we worked on getting those things done because that's clearly one of my specific goals is to see the park improve. We've talked about the basketball goals. We've talked about the lighting under the pavilions. It's not just the roof. It's also, it has fluorescent lighting from 1977. And there's LED lighting out there that needs to go away. You know, that needs, their LED lighting needs to replace that. So, um, can, can you bring us additional options of ways that we can work together where we can, because we do have money in the budget now?
Yes, we can. Because I have this wonderful business owner right here that I tag you with all of those tasks and I go, hey, would you come up with some suggestions?
I don't necessarily want them tonight, but I would like, I would like to have other options other than, um, where we can contribute from, we can contribute from our park money budget that we already have.
So you're saying on top of this or?
Yes. In addition, this, this is a great option, but there are, are there other ways that we could, that we could benefit from utilizing the EDC to improve the park and contribute the money that we put in the budget from the occupancy tax?
It's hoping we're matching grants, so they don't even have to spend half of it for a funding.
Exactly. But we would double the amount we could spend, but that only half of it would come from them and half, if that's the right number. I don't know that that's, that's, I'm, you know, asking you guys, what's coming back to us with ways that we can, um, that we can add to what you want to do and you can add to what we want to do.
That sounds like a great idea. So if you tabled it tonight, go vote on it, we can go and work and next month present you with an updated contract that would have components of that in it. Because we can do similar to what we do with our facade grant where you have a tier level. We could do a tier level for a work in, in the park itself and how we would match.
Want to add something?
Yeah. That occupancy money, which you get from the occupancy, there are very, very strict guidelines on what you can use it for.
All but 7% has to be used on tourism. And I promise you, the only tourism we have in this town is that park.
Yeah. So you're going to, but you're going to have to use something to prove that it is tourism. That's the problem.
I, I think, I think where you can prove that it's a tourism is by using the EDC calendar. Because the events that we have in the park that are for the economic development of the city match what that park is used for.
And 7% of that money has to be spent on advertising or tourism, draw tourism. So we have that money in there as well. There's another question in the back. I don't want to ask.
Is your internet down now? Are you still stable? No, I'm interested.
TB went to sleep?
Yeah.
Way to go, Donna.
Okay. So she's presented that.
I, I make a motion. We table it until we have additional options.
Now we've got a motion on the table to, to table. A second.
You've got three seconds there.
All right. So I've got a motion and a second. Table, file on paper. Ted Kelly.
This guy, I just want to thank, um, too, you know, she's, she put in a lot of time last year, a few years ago to fix the, the toilets and everything and, you know, that it was broken for a long, long time and he did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Okay. We'll move on from there. I, discussion and our action to review city administrator application. We do have the potential to go into executive session approved under Texas government code 551074, personal matters, if we feel like we need to. I think we can give an update of where we're at without that.
Unless y'all want to hear specific things about reference checks, then the reference checks have been done.
Reference checks have been done. Background's been done. The next point will be move on to set up the second round of interviews with the four. We'll put that on Mary to start scheduling. She'll get something out with us to work a schedule to go with.
Let's get these done.
Do we get a timeline? What, what timeline works? You guys, I'll email your, me, your availability in the next couple of weeks because it's going to get a little busy.
Recommend.
That's for interviewing?
Yes.
Okay. How many are shortlisted?
How many what?
How many are shortlisted?
Four.
Four.
Okay. Do we interview all four same day possibly?
Wouldn't that, that would be awesome. We could do two and two.
Two and two. I would draft it off for.
Yeah. Two and two would be great.
Do for the next meeting?
Um, why don't we do like this, Mary, if you will, get something put together and get it out to everybody? Get everybody respond back to the options. I mean, of course, those four candidates, their op, their availability is going to be something we'll have to work around.
In person?
In person.
Yes, we do want these four.
If they can't even make it here, then it's not even worth.
Which probably means it's in the evening. Um, so you also, that we also need to close the, a possible call because all five of them will be here.
Yeah, she'll handle that. Yes. That is a top priority in my book.
Mine too.
She's going to get it out to us and start trying to get all that scheduled. So technically, there's no action on there. So we can move on to number three, citizens input. Three minutes non-related to agenda items. I'd like to, since we didn't, I think we had something to date from our public works.
Yes. Thursday, we will be starting on the streets and we're going to start with friendship. We're going to completely reclaim it. And then we're going to move to Tomahawk. We're going to, we're going to rock each side street. Lone Eagle ready, going wahoo. And we're going to move to Tomahawk. We're going to ditch it and we're going to fully rebuild that oil sand. And then we're going to follow the comprehensive plan from there on out. And that starts Thursday.
So the comprehensive plan, phase one?
Phase one, yes. So the comprehensive.
Do you know what that phase one looks like?
I do. Phase one, we'll start a rain tree. Then we'll move to maize and then chandled. So we're just going to, we're just going to do it weather permitted.
Yep.
As we, as we knock out one, we'll move to the next.
It's going to be all bitches at the same time and bitches road.
Does that include, uh, Cleveland Culvers?
Yes.
Do we have a jet?
No. We got a fire.
We got a fire. Because I, I saw, I saw a note that you said that, that our current jet was broken. And that's clearly something that we use on a regular basis.
Right. So the past three seemed like we had trouble rounding it.
So how do we correct that where we have a jet?
Can I talk about that?
Actually, no. It should just be input. There shouldn't be a lot of.
Say we need a jet.
Yep. Okay. Any other citizens input, non-related to agenda items? Okay. Number four, adjournment. Motion. Is there a motion and a second? We are adjourned at 8:59.